Uh, he's about a lot of. Uh, maybe. Both. So it is for. That's why that would be. I'd like to be tricky. They're both in the line two.
No, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I expect.
Right.
I only make.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. The guy that came from.
Really?
Good stuff.
All right. I've got, I've got six or two. You ready? You sound so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So six or two. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our honor attacks this life, I plead the allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one indivisible. I'm going to do a case in for that.
Thank you. Will you bow? Oh, God, and source of our wisdom. We thank you for every public servant involved in governing our cities, our states, and our country, especially those that are gathered here this evening. I pray that you would impart your wisdom to our leaders as they seek to manage and enhance the city of Saginaw. May the decisions made this night foster an environment where every citizen can flourish spiritually, socially, and physically. And may we, as citizens, remember that we share in this responsibility. Let us therefore work together towards making this city of Saginaw a city that provides an opportunity for everyone to succeed in their work, reach their goals, and pursue their dream. It is in your holy name we pray. Amen.
I'm intrigued by this page. Please, there's a post around me if I can discuss and think about, uh, most of the secretary of health forms like this. And we have your opinion on both. So moving forward, item number four is consented agenda. A is actually very limited, number seventeen. B is actually very terrible dream, four percent taken stories for apparent ten percent services for lovely person. C is actually very local group, one server, I see, providing these services to this. The question sounds concerned when you consent to agenda. If not, anything but. Go ahead.
I just have a question about how we, how we need to pull the item. I just have a question.
Go ahead.
I was curious on item B. Do you have any idea how many people do the transport of this?
Okay. Do you know, Keith, uh, how many people use the transportation service now?
The general don't provide us with those reports. They don't provide us with those supports, uh, uh, reports, so I'm not aware of how many.
Ian, what? If not, anything but.
Mayor, my question might be passing, would you like to present?
All those favorite right? What the record side to do after one? People have security, it's a welcome. Moving forward, item number five, the recognition of government finance also taking award, achievement excellent, achievement excellence in financial reporting by six, with that, senior manager, Adrian.
Mayor, I'm happy to, uh, recognize our finance staff, especially finance director, uh, Kim Quinn, for continuing the streak for our, uh, the GFOAT, uh, GFOA, certificate of achievement and excellent financial reporting. This is year twenty-eight, so our FY twenty audit is currently underway, our auditors are actually here, um, on site. And I expect a year from now we'll have, uh, year twenty-nine, keep the streak going, so want to come in and recognize Kim, and, uh, it's really nice to, to receive awards, so she deserves credit.
Can you sort of explain quickly from post out of her board, what does it really mean, what is involved and achieved as an award?
Sure, so there's, there's two basic financial documents, uh, the city prepares each year, the annual budget and, uh, the category of the comprehensive annual financial report. Uh, so we have third-party or external auditors that come and review, um, our books and make sure that our financial statements are, uh, factually correct and represented in accordance with, uh, guidelines. Uh, and it's a kind of a back of house effort, right? So kind of like, to use a restaurant analogy, you see the finished product, but you don't see all the work that goes behind the kitchen. Tell you, there's a lot of work that goes, uh, goes into preparing the audit, uh, that staff works on, so want to recognize and thank Kim, and, um, we're happy to be here.
Well, they're, they're beautiful. Sue over frame. Normally we take pictures often to the, this year, but we just go and give the wall of iron, so congratulations to Kim, thank you so much. Our blue four, item number six, the serve national pride of demand and agreement for new original admission for operations, mostly of farmers' market. With that, Keith, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, this is an item that y'all discussed, or was brought to council at the last council meeting regarding the agreement with, uh, Community Link for the, uh, managing the, uh, farmer's market. Uh, one of the things that was requested at the last meeting was to have the rubric as part of the, uh, agreement, and we've included that in your packet, and, uh, it explains, uh, some of the questions I think that y'all had at the last meeting. If y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer.
I have a question. Actually, it's a current. Trey, I appreciate your feedback on the questions that I asked, I give out. Um, and so, you know, I was learning on the support.
Sure.
I just have a couple of questions. On the vendor location, was that?
Uh, sorry, I think your mic isn't on. Uh, sorry, someone was.
On the vendor, uh, let's see. On your answer, I asked how many vendors represent in Saginaw, and you said sixty percent from Saginaw. Uh, what is the percentage of that?
Uh, seven, six, one, seven, nine, and seven, six, one, three, one, right? Yeah, yeah.
And I wanted to tell you that if a property you're there, you said that I have a misconception of profiting from the market.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not at the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to share something else.
Sure.
I was at the meeting for both totally different reasons, one's there for your profit and loss. As you know, not over from the council meeting, I approach the council with a final, I want to do some part citizens. I have to have a brief day of apartment at the businesses and citizens, now as y'all are aware, and some of the senior citizens who are the profits, I've been planning for the training brand. The mayor and council day for people that that need to do this, and I just wanted to do it on the first Saturday of the tree line and start our Christmas season off with a festive holiday. We have a very bad year. Um, I wanted to use the switch art, and usually the farmer, the community link has farmer's market on the second, fourth weekends, but you had coverage, had yours on the first weekend, so. Um, but I was still happy, we should have done it from one to six, and after the city agreed to do it from one to six, you changed your time to a major project too. Uh, I called Gay into the mayor, and Gay thought we should have a meeting in the end. Um, I was there to ask you to change your time back to the original time, you had stayed on Facebook, and Gay said that the city had a contract with the league. And so I had to say to the mayor, we had tried to, we've been working out, so both of them are good people, okay? Okay? You wanted to charge your vendors, uh, and that's fine, that's what y'all do, okay? But I thought it was more important that our citizens pay for it for free one day a year. And I wanted to tell the citizens, thank you for making Saginaw better over the tax dollars, my buildings, switch art, your head. One day every business, all of them. I did tell everybody that I talked to about. Kind of waiting on your, uh, your. But, good evening, stated that the staff didn't sign up on this contract, it was a council. And I just want to say something, Trey, the council did approve the contract last year, but the staff is looking for that contract too. Patrick didn't link it up on his own, you know, it looked like Patrick called it up. Patrick didn't link it up on his own, and when it was presented to us, I was shocked. Um, to run the farmer's market and get all the proceeds off of it, have the taxpayers pay for the switcher. Um, and the reason I left is because Gay pretty much made you first priority over the mayor, our council. And I think that, and our citizens actually, and I did get up to late and I was visibly shaken, because I don't know how a contract with community link who proceeds, our mayor, our council, and our citizens, that's profit.
So that, so that seems a little misdirected toward me then. That seems a little misdirected toward me, Ms. Junkersville.
I know that you knew why you were there for that meeting.
Sure, I came very prepared, and, and I brought the profit and losses because it was brought up that we made too much money, and we were willing to collaborate on this event, but you were pretty obstinate in that fact.
Well, but that's not how we were there, we weren't there to talk about the profit and loss.
But it came up, and I was prepared to, to show them.
So then I did some of this thing, and Gay said that we paid her out of the hotel tax, is that correct? Okay, so I brought the, 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 I have two cap, two, two versions of the hotel two-step tax. And, um. Anyway, in this, also, in this, there's two parts that makes it doable, for having somebody else hotel tax, right? One of them has, um, the big thing is, and I talked to the contractor, and they said, the big thing is, you gotta have heads in beds. That's why you got to use, maybe use hotel tax for something. So I'm kind of curious, how do you use the hotel tax for the community link, because it's not the city?
Sure, so I might defer to the city attorney, uh, city attorney to determine that it'd be an appropriate use of ring and chime or whatever.
I just.
Sure, sure, the, the program doesn't have to be run by the city in order to expend the funds. And, and you're correct, the second step, so first you have to identify an appropriate category, and there's seven or eight of them, um, to promote tourism, and then the second element is heads in beds. Um, it, it's not a bright line test. Um, I've had candid conversations with staff in the past that encouraging overnight tourism in Saginaw, true traditional overnight tourism with an event, is going to be rather difficult. People don't come to Saginaw to spend the night. Um, so, but the, you have the funds available, they're paid for, uh, obviously generated by hotel stays, and so it doesn't burden the residents, the residents aren't actually paying, it's outside visitors that are paying for those funds. So it, as long as, and I, I can't adjudicate whether something clearly falls into that category or not, but as long as you can make a plausible argument that, you know, it might encourage overnight tourism, then it's, it's fairly safe to make the expenditure.
Well, I know what you said for the term of the grant, but there was overnight, yes, because some of the performers and they were, they had heads in bed, basically.
I think the biggest concern has been the craft side, which is not small, it's not a craft there. The farmer's market, they don't have a lot of folks buying for the farmer's part, the food part. There are fewer folks that do that, um, to do these other things, so. Always be there on the story, farmer's marketing, that's what brings people in. This thing will not show up to your craft there. All the layover dogs will not show up to your craft there. And so, I'm, I'm thrilled to have time, I really, I really appreciate the folks being here. Now, how, how else about that? Excuse me, any other folks got any concerns or questions? Uh, first of all, just, uh, just a little about this topic. Mayor.
Excuse me, Mayor, I've got, I've got a text message that no one can hear us off.
Oh, you know.
Yeah. I wondered if there was a problem.
All the folks, all the houses are all out, I guess?
No, that's.
No, yeah.
We have to speak up.
The what, where are our offices, speak louder?
Speak louder. Hold on, please.
So we apologize, don't get your, 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 sorry. Go, go, Mayor.
Um, just to reiterate what I stated at the last meeting, that Jerry's place was the job that he needed to look at. And it can't be done without the much cheaper than. We had to earn the person, because all the business added. And, you know, I think already it should change, and very kind of, uh, conversation, so I would be present in the moment.
Mayor, Senator.
And I agree, I think you guys do a great job, and I appreciate, uh, all that you do. Um, I would like to see the, uh, the, the agreement that you talk about. You also talked in here about, uh, fifty percent. Would you, uh, I can't find it now. Fifty percent would be farmer's market.
Sixty.
But then, if you have one document, it says sixty percent.
This document says sixty, yeah.
Um.
Oh, in the agreement, I think it might say fifty, and we've pushed it, yeah.
You know, and especially for us at the current time, I think probably more than fifty. You also talked about, um, and I think this could help in change the application. Because on both the application, the descriptions of what they sell are so vague that it makes it very difficult to understand what people have. I noticed that, uh, we have three people instead of only two. And that's a big part of their product that they sell.
Yeah, two of them, yeah. And, and our rubric allows three, yeah, I know, I know what you're speaking of, the micro green people.
They all can sell in pulses.
Yeah. Right, and that's why we don't need more, absolutely.
But one other thing that I noticed, and I also have to see if you have cottage food laws in your vendor lineup? But I think we need to take a closer look, because there is one vendor there that is not following the cottage food laws.
We can play with cottage food laws, I'm sure.
Okay, cottage food law is the people that are selling, uh, processed food, processed food here at home, like canned foods. And actually state law, across the, you say, every one, but they're very, very similar, but they all want the, the name of the people that, uh, make the product. It hasn't had the physical address on the label, the name is people on the label, uh, it has to have a batch number, and, uh, an installation date. And, uh, there's some people there that are not quite following that. And I'm actually super nervous, so I understand the risks, uh, with the sort of food at home.
Sure, and when you brought that to our attention early on, uh, we addressed all the vendors and some specifically, and if we know specifically the ones that aren't, we can address those as well.
Well, they're, they're still there.
Uh, I, I mean, yeah, but we, we may not know, where I'm not looking at every item.
That, because, you know, this is one of the few things that seems to do, and you all have problem ourselves, and you'll need to problemize.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's minutia, but we'll, we'll take care of that.
Um, okay, a lot of those things, they just found that. It's tasteless, it's odorless, and it's dead. What it wants over the COVID years. And it takes, like, way of the teaspoon, to have a entire option. So it's, it's bad stuff. But, uh, so, yeah, I think we need to take a look at the application, so we can get a little more detail in there. Um, if you have people that are good working people, what type of good working are they doing?
We do follow up, we ask for photos of their product. We do that. And that's our job, is to vet the vendor, well, yeah.
So, that's what I have. But, um, and the other thing I would like, is I know we have a community table?
Yes.
Or, I said, if they have.
Right.
I'd love to see a couple of tables for seniors as well, if no charge is there.
That's been offered, and we were told not, they didn't want that at this time.
Oh, that's, um, we're the seniors, they do want.
We, we, we contacted the appropriate people and, and were told otherwise.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had staff, that was a concern, and Mayor Proton raised, uh, talked to, uh, many of the rentals to verify whether that was a concern. As you know, with COVID, we, uh, we have seniors, open year to make the crafts that the seniors are making. Uh, two years ago, we sold them at, uh, the training arena festival, and had a really successful event. Uh, but that was not verified, Vicki Welton talked to them, um, so I, I don't know where y'all are hearing that, but that is not what we prefer. If you have a person or a name, that would maybe help, we can contact them.
So, we can see right now, but, uh, if it comes up again.
Yeah. Yeah, we're pretty easy to work with, I think, so.
And we would be willing to give them a couple of tables free of charge?
Um, well, we do, so there is a footprint issue, you, the park is, the, the farmer's market area is only so large, um, so we could look at what the options are for that.
For multiple farmers?
Yeah, I, I'm not committing yet, but, I mean, obviously, we would want to do that, right.
And then, as we discussed last week, according to my opinion, uh, the ancient cities and libraries, since you have them, uh, what is for, having the original, having Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, sure, again, we were in a, in a pandemic and supply and demand issue, and so. As, as needed, we will hopefully expand, we would love a bigger, better market.
We have people sitting on waiting lists, how they get off, how they, it's also waiting, like, in the middle.
Sure.
They're telling their goods just in more, and one of the, oh, yeah, one of the thing on makers of, is, um, IP, completely for business. You know, you give a buy to somebody that is well established, and you're participating in other markets and locations, and that makes a high point. Whereas if you have a new, relatively new, um, vendor with plans to expand, that's only two points, that seems kind of fair to those people.
Sure, well, to be honest, that rubric was borrowed from a very successful farmer's market, um, in Wake of Texas. Um, and so, again, that rubric is used just to kind of help us decide what vendor is in and out. And so, if it was a new business, but it was in Saginaw, they would get more points too, so it, it kind of weighs out.
I'm just wanting to make sure that our citizens, because they can't suppose, you know, we get the opportunity to participate.
Sure.
In the farmer's market, and I don't want them to sit on waiting lists for a year. But we'll be, there's.
Sure, and, and as stated, Community Link is doing this as a goodwill project, we see the benefit of having, it's a food opportunity in our community. As mentioned, hopefully, we'll accept WIC and SNAP next year. Um, but otherwise, we aren't benefiting from this, so if we can't move forward in a unified way, we are okay with stepping back from this, because it's.
I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to share with you.
Sure, and you know, anytime that you have a question, I've, I've called and we've chatted and.
This is a tough question.
Sure, we agree.
This is a tough question.
Mr. Carter? Good, far.
I just had a question, uh, so, Grant, I did, did ask, did we attach the rubric to the agreement? I don't see where we have reference to it in the contract document itself, which we really don't identify as a exhibit. Can we make sure that that hurts?
Absolutely.
Uh, the other thing is, and this is with respect to, and this is all the respect, okay? Minutia is what we expect you to pay attention to every rate of thirty thousand dollars.
Sure, well, I think you could look at the product and see that it's been successful.
If you're required by contract to follow state law, which you are, if I have a council member saying this over the council meeting, that you're not, that's a material breach of the agreement, okay? So what I'm saying to you is, please don't diminish some of the things that are being set up here. I mean, I can tell that some of these things are being set up, there's some anxiety around the issue, there are issues that are circling, that are probably, they probably are warranted to talk right here in this room. If somebody says, look, there's an instance in which you were made a material breach of the agreement, and to dismiss it by saying it's minutia, I'm offended by that.
I, I apologize for use of that term, what I meant was, is something we will obviously manage, as we've already addressed before and tried to manage, so.
Okay, this is, just bear in mind.
Sure.
That we are not only asking the taxpayers to sacrifice property that they have all paid for, but they're also sacrificing dollars to ensure that this is managed well.
Sure.
Okay, so all I'm asking is, if it's in the contract, it's my expectation.
Sure.
To do it, and if you're not doing it, it's a material breach.
Sure.
Okay, and the only reason I want the rubric in the contract, because, is because we need to make sure that you are enforcing that rubric. It's not just a do it out of hate.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, in, in the rubric, and as I said, that is from twenty to twenty-five, two minutes, it's all a matter of. Do we have people that are on the waitlist currently, that are ranging from twenty to twenty-five?
Yes, we are, uh, we have an issue of, of space, right? Um, of square footage, and, and again, in a pandemic, so, uh, making that set space safe there. So, imagining there is no COVID in March, we open, and there's more vendors, and, you know, it's.
That's a great point, I want to make clear to all the council, this sounds less to me like an operator's problem, and a lot more like a venue problem. So I think we really have got to start considering, what do we need to do to ensure that we have enough space for people who are ranking twenty to twenty-five on the rubric? I mean, if they're ranking fifteen, they belong on the waitlist.
Sure, sure.
But if they're all ranking twenty to twenty-five, and they're still on the waitlist, I think we may have a venue issue, which none of us could have foreseen that. Until we actually opened the park.
Right.
Opened the venue. Now that we've opened the venue, and it's, it's now open in an environment where we want to think, nobody's going to show up.
Right.
We have a waitlist of people that are, you know, ranking very high. So we really, I believe as a council, we need to start considering, what can we do to improve the venue?
I'd love to see those numbers, you know, how many people we have, or who are actually waitlists.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that, but.
Again, I, I know, uh, the crafts and these, people walking around, could, you know, they're only going to have two of each. They're not even applying, because they don't think they have a chance to get in.
Sure.
You know, so, if they want closet, this is a great problem to have, but we need to talk about this, and I agree with the council of the park. We need to figure out how to do this, but we can't do it without data.
Well, I mean, the data's there, I think, to suggest that we need more space, and we can't, Community Link's not responsible for that.
I'm gonna heat up my waitlist, you know, you know, we've got, you know, fifteen people that are ranking twenty to twenty-five.
Well, I, I think it's.
And out of those, you know, eighty percent of them, and, uh, the two Saginaw headquarters.
So, at what point is it micro management, or do you trust that we are betting and, and making the appropriate choices?
Well, I think the council of the park is saying that we need to provide that feedback to us, so we can make a decision on what we do within. Am I correct?
Yeah, I'll clarify that, I, I think, if, I do not want to confuse a venue problem with.
Right, right, right.
And the only way you're going to prove to me that this is not an operator's problem, is if you have the data back up.
Sure.
And what I've just asked you is, how many folks are in the twenty to twenty-five?
Sure.
And if they're telling me it's one or two, I would say three hundred.
Well, yeah.
That's not a real big problem.
Right.
But if we have twenty-five or thirty participants, and then on top of that, we have twenty-five or thirty who show up to these higher ranks, twenty to twenty-five, that is truly a venue problem.
Sure.
And that's not micromanaging, that is, that's us looking into the future.
No, thank you.
Whether or not we spend more tax dollars to expand that.
Absolutely. And, and we are data-heavy people, obviously, in a, we're nonprofits, so we can provide that information, um.
So if, it's just information for us to make critical decisions with taxpayer dollars, now or not?
Sure.
Is there? That's what we're.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
So, Mr. Beasley? Art, right, uh, thanks, Derek.
Mm-hmm.
Please, sorry, this is Richard Oliver. So, one question that, that he ran, uh, is the rubric appropriately referenced in the town document?
No, it is not, but, uh, if the contract is approved this evening, I'll be sure to amend the contract to add it.
I'll make that note. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns, folks? I think we've discussed this enough, but I'll make any questions. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the contract and ended to include, the rubric doesn't exist. You guys, that sounds like, the reasons, sir, although the same way you're writing it? Although the folks. Supposed to pass the plan, thank you. And we look forward to a very special time coming up. I'm looking for some other numbers, oh, seven, right? Seven, seventh action from, for the question, central builders, ink, and for construction work outside of hours of six AM to nine AM all week. Is that, is that the public works, Rick Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, uh, Merry Christmas, by the way. Um, again, the request, uh, the ask from the contractor, as you're aware, is being, uh, is working on Planet Fitness just south of here, uh, on the Boulevard. Um, the request is to, is to allow them to work on Saturdays, um, uh, from seven AM to five thirty PM, and also Sunday during the hours of seven AM to three PM. Uh, city code only allows construction of this type to occur with, between the hours of six AM and nine PM, nine PM, uh, on weekdays. Uh, staff's recommendation, of course, you can, uh, deny the request, or, or any combination of, but our, our recommendation is that we allow them to work on Saturdays, uh, but not Sundays, from nine AM to five thirty PM, and that would, uh, take place through February first, twenty twenty-one. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
I'm going to have to, you're good. So, question, counsel, question, sir. Will you stay at four Saturdays, from, from nine to five? And notice some, you're.
From nine to five thirty on Saturdays, is, is the recommendation. Of course, you can reduce that, or, it's council's pleasure.
Have we had complaints from the citizens about noise or anything else from that part of the park?
He's, he's really good at that kind of.
Okay. We're not able to.
It's like five point four seven?
Oh, it's our, no, okay. Compared to the other.
No, he was right there, he said they started.
Yeah, Saturday, eight o'clock, six, or, oh, road, no, yeah, is that.
Hey! One of the people said those houses were so open, the windows are canned, so the noise just shakes them.
Really? Well, I'm thinking actually behind us, the little, I gotta do the window, the little man. But we, we have heard.
I will say that, that, uh, prior, I went on vacation last week, but prior to my vacation, they did make a request to pour concrete uh, earlier than six o'clock, which, which we denied, so, I mean, one, one consideration might be to limit heavy equipment, which would have the backup alarms and things of that nature, but, again, it, it's, it's, uh, council's pleasure.
Senator, what?
Yeah, I was going to ask if that also included the holiday gifts, those Saturdays?
Yes, to, the way it's reading today, there's no restriction on, on holidays, yeah.
Uh, I don't know how, uh, Councilmember Beasley, his language would be about, uh, holiday gifts.
Christmas is on Saturdays, I'd like to have a Christmas, uh. It'll probably be hard to get construction work results site Christmas Day afternoon on Christmas Eve anyway, so. I, I'm just, I'm curious, I saw that they were asking for, actually, wartime in the recommendation, uh, on Saturdays and Sundays. It seemed like they were asking for seven to three.
Yes, on the, on the, let me get the letter, pull the letter up. Uh, Sunday from seven to three PM, correct?
So, and, and just out of curiosity, I mean, nor, under normal circumstances, a contractor would ask for this kind of accelerated schedule because they have some kind of, if they're trying to get a deadline, they're trying to get their facility open, and that there's some benefit to the community, for example, if it's a school project or something that served the community. This is definitely something that I think that the community will benefit from, uh, to, to GM. I see that a lot of folks are anxious to have additional GM opportunities here in the city. But I also think that Sundays, with a project this size, happening adjacent to homes within sixty feet or eighty feet, uh, and the building shell being sealed, no matter backup alarm or not, you put a chop saw and something to steal, we'll appear.
Certainly.
So, I think Sundays in my mind are off limits. I think it's Saturday, I, I think it's appropriate to delay start until nine even ten o'clock. I feel how people who work for all week, the soup would lay on Saturday. So I, you know, I, I think that what they've asked for is a little bit too much, I think what staff is recommending is just about right, as long as Sunday's off limits and nine o'clock on Saturday morning is their start limit.
How do we enforce this, what are our options for enforcing, if we violate?
Well, primarily, it would be a violation of the ordinance, so they could be subject to citation, be a five hundred dollar offense. You, you could always, but, you could always place the item back on the agenda and revoke the waiver as well.
We do agree this will make your base, are aware of that, if there were diffusal, uh, consequence? I'm going to go with counsel. Worth to turn a thought on, I can move.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the workout, or she starts at nine to eight AM on Saturday, ending at three PM on Saturday, and he'll work on Sunday.
Okay, although the favoring right now? Thank you, thank you. I have number eight. Third, third action regarding development agreement, is Thomas, we're, uh, that, any further data?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm going to go over a few of the deal points, now, I'll refer to the city attorney, representative, uh, Providence, this year, this evening, if there's any questions that you might have for, uh, the door to parks. So, I'm happy to be at this point, and hopefully moving forward with the new development. Want to recognize Brandon for his work, uh, Rick, a number of others, we, we had a lot of time, um, getting, getting here this evening. So, the development agreement is kind of a precursor to what will be, uh, we've already, you all have already created the Public Improvement District. It is not funded, uh, at this point. So, Providence, at some point in the near future, will close on the property, on the property outright, and then will come back to you through the, uh, Public Improvement District, project planning process, to find, um, all the infrastructure eligible projects, and then issue debt to paper that. So, uh, that'll be funded by the district itself, uh, at no cost to taxpayers at large. One of the neat features of, uh, Public Improvement District, I think, too. So, development agreement requires that generally, uh, the development models are overlay standards, uh, related to exterior construction, building articulation, uh, that sort of thing. If you recall at our last meeting, we went over a number of these points in, uh, thorough and in detail. Councilmember Farber brought up some points related to, uh, masonry and, uh, exterior products. These, uh, mirror what was discussed related to development, so, um, if you have any specific questions, have to answer that. Generally, we're setting a standard for masonry that we kind of already set a precedent. There are, uh, the uses that are prohibited within the overlay would be prohibited within the bounds of the district. Uh, and a few uses would require specific uses or council approval, so that's outlined in the document, if you have any questions. Previous discussions, if you recall, there are, uh, it's a limitation on having a multi-tenant building of, up to ten thousand square feet, so, a strip center or similar, uh, building, um, with no restriction on the number of tenants, and two, um, smaller multi-tenant buildings at five thousand square feet. So, for lack of a better term, there's a triangle, the future extension of Western Center will kind of bisect the property, and the southern portion of that.
Rookle, Rookle, I'm sorry. Like, right up? I hope you're not going back to the. Uh, I have heard that the West Side microphones are working for the other or not, that's what I, I think we can settle up, so. I hope Mary's working her way up to this brand, so, yeah, I'll be back. Thank you.
So you can see, um, the illustration, I was going to put it in context, the future extension of Western Center will, uh, ultimately feed into McElroy, that block D track, um. We've, we've noted, uh, to have a minimum square footage requirement footprint of thirty-five hundred square feet. Uh, the intent behind that is to encourage sit-down restaurants, uh, as opposed to multiple fast food users. Uh, our friends at Providence have, uh, agreed with that restriction. The last, uh, and, and probably the most exciting for us, part of the agreement, is we've outlined a future public park and open space amenity, uh, being paid for by the Pid. It, it's proposed to have a constant level of water feature, uh, that's usable, as well as a, a playground and splash pattern. Uh, we've outlined in this agreement that two million dollars of the future, uh, Pid debt issuance will be reserved for that project, so, I'm really excited to be able to, uh, bring that forward. There'll be an acre and a half of park area, uh, for those amenities, and the plan is for it to be adjacent to a constant level water feature. The agreement requires that when the, uh, infrastructure for the Western Center extension commences, that the park would begin at the same time, so that, uh, we're able to deliver to the public, uh, um. Everybody's happy, and I'm, I, I appreciate a good, fresh new street, um, but, um, public would definitely be happy to have a, a new park as well, so the intent is to run those projects concurrently. Just one last, uh, item, and I would defer to the city attorney. The pit is created, as I mentioned, but not yet funded, that'll happen at some point in the future, once Providence closes on the property. There's tremendous in, interest in the property, and, and maybe we'll, we can speak to that. We have some pre-development meetings with some future users, so, uh, we're really excited, and, uh, I don't know if I'll let anything out, Brandon, but.
The only thing I would add procedurally is, there are a couple of the elements, not of the development criteria that Gabe just summarized, but of the, the PID financing procedure that are still being negotiated. Tried to work this through as quickly as we could, to get you something, since we don't have another meeting before December thirty-first. You all may recall, if the, uh, development agreement is not approved by December thirty-first, then the PID can be dissolved, uh, the district itself, so the thought was, bring this to you, since the deal points have been fully negotiated, and ask for your consideration if you would like to approve this, that it be subject to final city manager approval, prior to the mayor signing.
Mayor, any other questions? Counsel, question?
Um, so you look at the section of the pit, so my partner, two point one, way down, right, actually prohibited uses and permit-only uses. Two, five, and six, C, three, four, back, or, anyway. I'm a little confused, just much like I was with open land district, why, or we say we can have permit-only for bottle, car rental, but no park sales? I just, I, I think we either, all are prohibited, or all are suspension permits.
These are.
I don't understand the reason behind that.
And I, I can't speak to the reason for, or the impetus for it, but this is taken verbatim from the overlay district requirements, and so whatever justification there was for differentiating those two uses at the time the overlay was adopted, that, that same result was simply. those two uses at the time the overlay was adopted, that same result was simply carried forward to this agreement.
Well, I question that, given the overlap, I still didn't understand the reason behind that, and then also, no outside storage permitted, I assume that things to be prohibited as well? And if right now it's permanently, would be approval of the council?
So, does pronouncing comes at council? Like, maybe I need to have it approved from the council, correct, and not from the town?
That's right, that's right. So, all of the uses in both categories are prohibited, and interestingly enough, even the prohibited uses, the procedure is the same, come to council and ask for an amendment to the agreement. So, it's sort of splitting hairs to even have two categories, however, perhaps it just shows some good faith to have some uses contemplated as we would even consider allowing them, but whatever the council's desire is, I'm happy to make any changes that you see fit.
I don't want to turn this down over those couple little items, but I really think at least we look at it more closely, so it just doesn't look like we're trying to contradict ourselves.
Senator Gabriel?
Well, I'm just calling by memory, but I believe when we approved the public land district, the reason was, that's the kind of that. I don't know the reason, I don't know what we called it, would be allowed to use permit, was because we did have some WTCs on there, and the thought was, we don't have to keep these now, you know, that already, we did, but I think, and we don't already have, did we already have the car sales? No, we don't have one. So, I think that's why it was, I think it was an attempt to give special attention to those automotive businesses that already is coming here and not to mention these.
I think that.
That's by me.
Sure, and it's been a while. The general intent would be prohibitive and special uses related to outside storage, so is it realistic or feasible that we're gonna have a car rental location in Saginaw? I don't find that likely. I don't know that Providence is even talking to a user that would support, be interested in that use, but to echo what the city attorney, what Bryn mentioned, if that's a condition, this was written so that if there are exceptions or special requests, that they come back to the city council on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and also to point out, we even expanded on the uses and conditional uses by adding nail salon and donut shops, which were not in the overlay, so this is actually a more broad series of prohibitions than what's in the overlay district.
Is that address your concern, councilman? So, how can we get to address your concern, councilman? Understand?
And I'm not sure that there is a overlay, car sales, I don't know what the difference is.
Sure, and I think we can add that as a, as a use that would require city council approval, if that's.
Well, they already require city council approval, but I think it can still be prohibited, but it's not for a permit, and same thing for the outside storage.
We're fine, it sounds like Dorothy, Providence is fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Senator, you wanna move that?
I'm happy to add that.
I'm the CEO of there.
Yeah.
And you wanna move from six to five? You got, we got a minute?
Yeah, those two, I appreciate that.
So, your vote will be moved, auto rental and outside storage from section, what is that? E six to E five?
It's on page eight, probably in the middle of the sheet, five.
E six to E five?
E six. Sixty-five.
I'll make the change.
That works at all.
Absolutely.
That works for me, if that's a killer of the rest of the council.
What do I else think? Everybody agree with that? Okay, there you go. Our other feedback, our, Senator Gabriel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Mr. Farr?
You said a few things, and Bryn triggered my memory about façades on our commercial tracks, but I don't see where the rest of the building, the other elevations are addressed at all. So, this falls under A two. All building façades, so are we, facade, so I'm here by saying all building, we're not limiting that to just the front facade, we're saying all facade, correct? Last number off.
So, I apologize.
Page six.
Okay. I apologize, this, there's so many sections.
No, no, I can't do that.
All right. 2.1A.
It's on page six, is 2.1A, I see what you're doing, A, A one two, A, A two, you see that on page six?
I've got 2.1A, little i, two.
Really, they got you, keep up. You're a lover.
Yeah, there's too many people working on this agreement.
But I just want to clarify, since we differentiate as a residential component, that we have a front facade, that this, all facade means every wall, all elevations.
Right, so you're talking about the single family?
No, I'm actually, this should fall under the commercial.
The commercial architectural standards.
Commercial architectural standards.
All building facade shall be architecturally finished with 80% masonry.
All, I want to clarify, is all these, every elevation.
That's right, that's right.
And then, you had mentioned that there are some, some of the Pid financing arrangements are yet to be figured, you had, I mean, discussed, I mean, clarify this, is the Pid limit still being discussed?
No. It's been established at 14 million, that's not changing. One of the items, for instance, is the information that the developer provides to the underwriter. Bond counsel has suggested that we be privy to it, and Providence counsel has said, if we are privy to it, it becomes public information, and it could be competitively harmful to us. We need to work that out, that item has not been resolved, but those are the, to borrow Community Link's comment, those are the minutia that we're still working on.
They've made it complicated, so I can't, I can't say that we're being paid in a massive amount.
That's right.
So, you know, at the end of the day, I think what's important that we understand is that we are encumbering a certain group of our taxpayers into indebtedness for thirty years, and.
Thirty-five, potentially.
Thirty-five, so, okay, so the term.
That's, that's right.
And that group of taxpayers will carry the burden of improving and ultimately maintaining that region of our city, right?
Well, those are the, those are the future taxpayers that will be responsible for retiring the debt, associated with the improvements that would be built up front.
And this is not taxpayers in any other part of our city?
That's correct.
So, the.
That's absolutely correct.
The 14 million dollars we're talking about.
Yes.
And as part of this Pid, to distill this down to very simple language, taxes in the city outside of this Pid district will not be raised to finance any of these improvements.
That's right, and the assessments that are levied, maybe splitting hairs, only on this region are not taxes either. It's, it's an, just an annual assessment fee, that this development agreement will be filed in the deed records, and it will run with the land as an encumbrance on the property, so it should be a disclosure to any future property owner, you're subject to this HOA fee equivalent, if you buy in this area.
There you go. This money is coming out of your pocket, once you sign on the dotted line.
That's correct.
That's what it should say.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that, and I appreciate you all, you all, and that, because I think this is gonna be a great partnership to look forward to any new state development.
I have a couple of brief questions. This is on page eight, it says convenience store, section, where are you? East, so that's a convenience store at the middle of the property, but we do not specify where the property, and that convenience store being block D?
That's the big, the big, the, this.
But, yeah.
It's bigger, I think, if you do it, right? About that mean?
No, I, I think the intent was that the corner lends itself to a convenience store, so we acknowledge that that's a likely, probably first and easiest path size maybe to get going. The intent was to not have all time, so everybody likes to poke fun at their neighbors, friends in Fort Worth, there's a 7-Eleven, you know, little 7-Eleven in some spots of Fort Worth and across the city, like every corner, so the intent is to have one convenience store around the whole, and I don't know that we defined it, or said where it would have to go.
I guess I would just counsel dump it, a convenience store block D?
I would prefer not.
I would. So, you just want to put something that says, except block D, is that something you can?
You can, if it's agreeable to the developer.
But I realize that we're pressing block D, I think, a certain side of the business, and we're not gonna go there and rent, but I would love to, if people were left block D? We'll do, we could do it on spot.
There you are.
You wanna, if I'm something I can hear you anyhow, I would say approach the asset, but can't hear yourself.
Oh, okay.
You okay?
Yeah.
Bryn, you hear say with that, that that's how people legally ask?
Absolutely, certainly, certainly.
As a council, any more left?
And not to jump around, just before I forget, to, to Mr. Farr's questions earlier about the exterior facades, I just want to be clear that, that will apply to everywhere except the industrially zoned area. There are no exterior material standards for the industrially zoned parcel all the way to the left.
I've got a couple of big future questions. Is the development agreement for a entity that does not yet own the property? What if it does own the property, when that goes to the agreement?
It automatically terminates.
Yeah. Have a certain date to deal with?
Yes, so there are three, there were three benchmarks, development agreement by the end of the year, closing on the property by March 31st of next year, and entering into a construction agreement for the public improvements by April 20th, 2022. If any of those elements do not occur, if either the city or the developer makes the request for the dissolution petition to be submitted, then I'll turn it in to Janus, it's already fully executed, and you can take action to dissolve the Pid, and the agreement automatically terminates if any of those three triggers occurs.
My concern is, I would still not want this property, I don't want to see this on council again until y'all rule, and I'm not, I'm not making fun of y'all, I'm laughing, but we have to get open access, we move quickly, it's your turn, your turn to act, and that's paying money for the, for the agreement. So, I want to work with the owner, not the potential, for here, I'm happy with this tonight, I know we said we would, and yeah, and everything we said, other problems matter as well, that's my thing, I can assure you, I don't want this on council again, it's a problem, I think that everybody else, they agree with that, my big two markets?
I agree with that.
So, that's myself, any other questions, I want to, this is Bryn. If not, I want to table.
Mayor, I move that we make the adjustments to use to relocate the auto sales and outside storage from the, what, E six? E six to E five, and that we prohibit convenience stores on track D.
And, and that the mayor is authorized to execute the agreement, subject to the city manager's final approval of the form of the document.
And that the mayor is authorized to execute the agreement, subject to the city manager's.
Approval of the final.
I guess, it's got to work out.
Couple of edits.
The financing.
That's correct. There's just procedural issues associated with it.
Think of the issues related to this financing.
Thank you.
Does that sound good, Mayor? Is that good, is that motion, it's complex, but I appreciate it.
Absolutely, no, thank you.
All right, council, all of the favor, you're right. All right, we're busy, let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you a lot. I remember not expecting that regarding ordinance, 2020, 47, and in section 622.
Geez, the deputy analyst, I don't think that, with that, Senator Gabriel? Mayor and council, I think this is the third time we brought this topic back to you, so since the last time we visited, there was a number of issues that were raised. I'll go through a few of those, and I think I'm gonna ask that it remains table at this time, so we can work some of these out. So, preface everything by saying that if somebody wants to keep bees right now in Saginaw Texas, they can, we have no policies prohibiting the keeping of these, but we also have nothing specific to be keeping, so a few issues came up, council member had mentioned concerns about the minimum setback of 50 feet from an inhabited well. Spoke with Ms. Burge, who visited a council meeting, as to why the 50 feet was established, and it's really about being a good neighbor, and, you know, a lot of bees in close proximity, in smaller lot subdivisions are, they're not gonna, it's not gonna be feasible. So, talked with Rick, and think that 40-foot step back is probably reasonable, acknowledging that not all lots in Saginaw would be big enough to accommodate hives, I think a reasonable person would kind of recognize that. Issue that our animal services manager, Jose, brought up, was we noted that adjacent neighbors must be notified, that there doesn't seem to be a recourse or a hearing if there's objections, so if, you know, a neighbor had an allergy, or some issue with bees nearby, that maybe, we may need to set up a process to work through that. So, at this time, that's really all I have, I'd like to table this again, if somebody wants to keep bees today or tomorrow, they can, we'd like to come back with you, with some better information to take action.
Council, any questions for staff? Any motion table?
I'm proposing, uh, definitely, it's possible.
All of the favor table, for the governor?
Love, I'm nothing, so, go again. So, I remember, what did you say? Code Enforcement, that's new, Code Enforcement manager, Jeremy Robertson.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jeremy Robertson with Code Enforcement, I'm here tonight to present the commercial corridor update that's been requested. I have a slideshow I presented. I started the inspections in January of 2020, with, starting at the far northern part of the boulevard, working my way south, and top arrow, it's where I started, the bottom arrow is where I'm at right now, which is McElroy and Main. And then, the investigation, the commercial corridor inspections are scheduled on Mondays. On those Mondays, commercial corridor work includes bandit sign removal every Monday, citywide, and typically takes requirement of one to two hours of work. And then Saginaw Boulevard initial inspections and follow-up inspections are conducted on average two Mondays per month. Along with those investigations, public view inspections, and may include meeting with the responsible party or contact on site, such as for parking lots, signs, screening devices, landscaping, exterior of structures, and outdoor display and storage. Along with those investigations, research may include zoning, business permit, and certificate of occupancy. With investigations include administration action, every investigation is set up as a code case, even if no violation is observed. Every action is noted on each case, all photos are archived, notice to correct is issued to a responsible party, follow-up inspections are scheduled and conducted until violations are corrected.
Time trying to vote for something that so many people are so concerned about. The bridge is not fifty fifty, so that was in the gray. But the roundabout, the percentage against it, I talked to, is much, much higher than that. And so I understand that people.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I might address that and the council. If you hear those concerns, please let me know. Please give me names and phone numbers. I'm happy to call anybody and everybody. Dana's happy to discuss. Talk through the evidence and the research. So, you know, please share. We're happy to reach out. So if I don't know, I can't help or make the first contact. I've had exactly three emails from residents and one phone call. One of those residents was actually somebody that Dana spoke to. My understanding, and I don't want to speak for her, but after they talked, there were some misconceptions that maybe were resolved. So that's why we're here is to talk about research and make an educated decision. Have a path for whatever the ultimate decision is. Signalized intersection around.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add to that. I mean, the people that, when we were out in the public, doing the public education, we had a handful of folks that came up saying, I hate roundabouts. You know, they had those kind of conversations. And as we talked through, explained to them the context, it's a single lane. There's going to be a raised, like the raised crosswalk, all the different elements to it. And then asking them what their concerns are with Knowles. And it was the speeds on McElroy and on Knowles. So as we talked through it, they got comfortable with the idea of the roundabout by the time we were done talking. And the same thing with the conversation I had earlier today with the lady that had a bunch of concerns with pedestrian safety and also just design, design questions she had about the research she had done on her own. And by the end of it, she said she was comfortable with the roundabout. So I think where Gabe's coming from is we'd like to be able to have the design ready to go if the bond election passes. So we could start construction as soon as possible. And getting a decision on this intersection is key to that second phase of Knowles drive. We can't really move forward beyond where we're at right now. So I think certainly doing more public education and discussions while we're designing it would be great. If we could move forward that way.
How can we get more out of seniors? A lot of them don't use computers. They're not getting together.
They're not getting together at all?
Well, we shut down the rec center for them.
Okay.
You know, fly door, you know, place, then that's cases horrible, and then what the rec center is. So I hope I put the answers to that.
Yeah, like I say, if you have people in specifically that you'd like to staff and contact, I'll talk to anybody anytime. I mean, you know, I put my number out there. Like the Maytag Repairman, I get very few calls. So we're happy to reach out. You just give us the information. We do have a list, I believe, a pretty comprehensive list of our, kind of our regulars at the senior center. Maybe half of those folks are Saginaw residents. But we're, I'm happy to call those folks and tell them the projects.
Shopping or the park with kids or something? Do you ever ask people, hey, how do you feel about this?
All the time, so.
How do you?
You've given me, sure, you've given me an opportunity to opine about the city management profession that you were direct. So I spent three or four hours and I'm just giving. Yeah, our job is a twenty-four hour job, and I like to take a straw pole and see how things are going. I employ four personal park inspectors, my children, so every chance we get, we're out in the playground. If y'all have been by, you notice that Willow Creek Station is back in action. I haven't had specific, you know, casual conversations related to roundabouts other than visiting with Kenley Horn when they did the demonstrations at the farmer's market. But again, what Dana mentioned, when I think, you know, we're all victim at some point of our preconceived notions. And I think if we try to take the emotion away from what appears to be a very emotional issue, the reality is what's being proposed by professional engineers is the safest thing we can offer. I think one of the misconceptions that is worth noting, the raised pedestrian crosswalk has the effect of, I'm not an engineer. I was what a math guy once upon a time, is it's kind of like a speed bump. So it is a traffic calming device and is there to improve pedestrian safety. So I feel like the, whatever the direction is, what we're bringing to you is our best recommendation. Y'all tell us what your pleasure is, that's what we're happy. You send me numbers or names, I'm happy to talk to anybody.
Yes, Valerie?
How far, how far back are the crosswalks?
I can't hear you, sorry.
How far back are the crosswalks? Is it two, three blocks, speed bump?
Yeah, it's usually about thirty feet to forty feet. Yeah, I don't know the exact measurements without looking at it, but around there.
Well, yes, the speed, if I found the accidents, or there's one about the roundabout. So, and I know a lot of people don't want it, but not all the others. If it keeps track of moving, I think that when people are cautious, it will be safer. I don't know how.
A lot of the complaints I heard from the folks being out in the public was, that live there. And because they say it's the speeds. And I think that'll definitely help slow that.
I know it's going to be a signal light, so that's what, what, fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah, roughly, yeah.
It's kind of down, can we power to fifteen? If it's a constant slow, there could.
Right there at Ellis, it's thirty.
Oh, the current posted speed? Yes.
And Ellis is thirty.
I think it's on McElroy, is it thirty-five or thirty?
It, it was thirty from.
Yeah.
Thirty from Longhorn to where it changes, where the division, the subdivision used to be. In the park, you know. And then it goes to, to, back down to twenty. And a police officer told me that it's because of the way the houses are facing. If they're not facing the street, it's thirty, if they're facing the street, it's twenty.
I've been there several times. I've been working work before thirty five, three hours, I hit there several times, I'm very tired, so.
That's been done, but I'm glad to see you're here that you're going to have raised crosswalks. But what about the little flashing lights at the.
Yes, we're going to do both. We're going to do both, yes. Mm-hmm.
Or sign, sign the black.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, the little beacons.
Those are the R R F B.
Yes, right. Oh, gosh. Rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Yeah.
A multi-lane signalized intersection is probably the most dangerous intersection you can put that far. A multi-lane signalized intersection. That's what we're talking about, the.
That would be the alternative, yes.
As an alternative. A single-lane roundabout with the kind of pedestrian protection measures we're talking about is the safest thing we can put at intersection. So it doesn't take much convincing for me. I just, it's hard for me to understand anyone who looks at the movements of a vehicle, the number of options to a vehicle in a multi-lane signalized intersection is unreal. Especially when you've got folks who are anticipating at a crosswalk what somebody's willing to do. You have folks who are having to look literally two hundred and eighty degrees to determine what anybody else is wanting to do and make all those calculations before they make the movement. And knowing that you're introducing somebody into an intersection that is just one lane. You cross a speed bump before you enter the intersection. You go into an intersection which you see all these flashing indicators. And before you exit that intersection, you get another speed bump. So you're getting two speed bumps entering and exiting this intersection. You're not going to be going for the fifteen miles out, or you'll take the underside of your car. So it is, it is important that we discuss what the alternative is here. We keep using roundabout as this is our only option, it is not.
Right.
We can certainly put in a multi-lane signalized intersection that is proven to kill people. Now, I'll just tell you, if the fire department is saying, these are the men that show up to pull people out of cars when they wreck. These are the men that also say they believe that this is the safest intersection we would put in this location. So it doesn't take much convincing for me to go the direction of a single-lane roundabout. It's going to take a tremendous amount of convincing someone in this meeting that the multi-lane signalized intersection is the safest one.
Okay.
And I think I'm reading you again, I'm on roundabouts. I think we keep track of moving, but talking to seniors who have driven through some of that. The problem is they do not know how to drive them. Education, maybe the education is not right. My neighbor was screaming the other day because she was sitting in a roundabout. She got there first and a guy walked to her left car off. And I said, well, you have to do it the right way because he's inside the circle. Well, I got there first. It was better. But especially some of our favorite drivers don't understand how to drive them. And we really need to work on educating them on not just how to say roundabout law, but how to drive in, how to enter a roundabout safely, how to hit on it safely. Don't keep coming, please stop here, come. And I had a long talk with her on my neighbor, Ben, going through her, to special.
I think the last time we came, somebody mentioned that there was a presentation at the senior center about how to drive roundabouts. Am I recalling that correctly? I think ARP or somebody did it, like, so there is, has been that before, but there's. Right, but there are things like that that could be done, yes, absolutely.
We have a lot of seniors who are sitting, you know, back and down. There's a lot of elderly too that aren't comfortable with that. You just, we need to get help if you pass that.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a question? So, I don't know. Any other questions for Dana? I'll keep Dana here. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand the suggestion, that we put a little more on change now, I think. And, and it's when the, when the system looking ability opens, you know, you can just make an effort to have like, a teaching, a practice, to follow what why they're separate and how to navigate. And then force Mariposa, and then like you all get those. And when the senior activities start up, you know, doing that is there. So, yeah, I think that would allow you to figure. And you and Dana, that's needed in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Dana? Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
I did a request, no, Dr. Uglie.
Oh.
Kelly Stewart, she wants to speak on this.
Kelly Stewart, four oh four Mustang Drive. Some of my questions have been answered. I know we talked to the fire chief. I was going to also ask the chief how, how he felt about it. That's been discussed. We've talked about the elderly. I would like to also bring up the schoolchildren that are right there. And, you know, some of them will and some of them won't be using that intersection. You know, make sure we don't forget the school kids. You know, we've got an elementary school at each end. That, please. And the education, is that something that we're expecting? The, I'm sorry. Yeah, them to do, is it something we need to step up?
This is going to be a decision to drive, we should definitely be. Is that perfect?
Okay.
We'll see if we respond to that. We'll give you the ball, yeah, I'll say.
Okay. Those, most of my questions got answered. So thank you.
Thank you. Couple things. When we started this process, we were, we were a little bit uneducated on roundabouts. So we learned during the last couple, three months. I'm a heightened person, did not know that much about how they work and why. So I appreciate what we learned. And Kimmy Horn, I appreciate the presentation, also the efforts of the work. And the first order, the hard work, I had to get them to draw them, show them on the ground. I appreciate that Andrew and Dana doing that, I think that helped. I personally think makes me good, and that's really helping me understand why roundabouts are good. I've used them before to learn the history of why and how it works and why. So now I'm convinced that roundabouts are, move traffic better, are safer for desert and dark. And also along the way, cheaper to close with evidence, or the lack of evidence of the closing of the civilization. See, I have no, no issue at all with roundabouts, just okay, I think. I've been brought a lot on myself, a lot, so I'm thankful you guys. But we took our time to do it the right way, so. Any other questions, folks? If not, any other questions? If not, I'll turn my phone over.
There's a motion, pretty likely.
Motion, yes. I, I asked me a brother about this.
Yeah, no, no motion. I mean, if you want to do a show of hands, we just need some direction where we can say, you know.
I think a motion would be fine. I moved, I moved forward with the roundabout, Knowles and McElroy. That's second. Second. You're all second. Although, favorite, right? Although, vote? Thank you all. Thank you, Kimmy Horn, thanks everybody, appreciate the information. We learn a lot, we'll continue, we'll give a careful piece. Appreciate Mary's point, and Stewart's point about educating folks and how to do that. It feels good, I think, so. Just feel good with the great idea, I know we bumped that up, and appreciate that. Uh, we are at, I was number twelve. Conference plan, I remember the game very.
Mr. Mayor, this is, just to frame this, this is a project we, we want to get your input and feedback in, that likely would be in fiscal year twenty-two. So I'm happy to introduce Ms. Abra Nussar. She was Kenley Horn's planning group to talk about some of the things we might look at in the future conference appointment day and what some of the focus areas might be, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here tonight. My name's Abra Nussar, and I'm a senior project manager at Kenley Horn. My focus is on planning, design, and community engagement. So we've just got a discussion item tonight, going to run you through kind of some of your current plans and, and talk about the future of Saginaw. So we're going to talk about current plans, the changing context, some of your foundational planning documents, some of them you have, some of them may be upcoming, your current comp plan, and then a potential comp plan update in the future. So this is a list of your current plans. There might be a couple more, but this is mainly what you have out there. You've got a strategic plan, you've got a complimentary action agenda for that, an annexation plan, which means you won't be annexing because you're landlocked, and some other items, budget-related items, and multi-year financial plan. You've, you've had a lot of planning efforts going on. So part of what we want to do tonight is just talk about how they all relate together and how they start to form a bigger picture. So Saginaw has a changing context. You've had a lot of green spaces in the past, and now most of them are planned or under development or they're going to remain open space. So then you've got kind of a redevelopment shift where you're going to be starting to focus on small, little remaining tracts, redevelopment of previously developed parcels, and beautification and branding and place making. So these are going to be becoming more theme, more prevalent as Saginaw continues to mature. And it's just kind of the evolution of a city, right? So this is an example of a corridor in a lesser city than Saginaw. But, you know, you've got some of these corridors around town that maybe are lacking in sidewalks and beautification. Go down them, it's just kind of anywhere USA, or it doesn't have a good feel to it. I know some of you can think of these right off the top of your head. But what we can come in and do is really reimagine these corridors based on community feedback. What does the community want to see? What does city council want to see? And really start to shape some of these places that maybe need a fresh identity or some different land uses. We've been talking about millennials with dogs and what you would like to see in certain corners. So it's really about shaping that redevelopment context and figuring out, even though somewhere's already developed, what could it look like? So again, which would you rather? And then, you know, even intersections, right? So roadways, we've been talking about roundabouts and how we can reimagine certain intersections. This is actually an example, Tech Dot was coming through this area, going to really put through a big improvement. Well, some people felt it was an improvement, some people not. But we were able to kind of bring a different intersection treatment to the table to talk to Tech Dot. And Tech Dot is actually going to pay for this version and maintain it. So, you know, without having these conversations and really thinking about design proactively, you kind of get what you get. But if you can really bring some foresight to the conversation, it begins to paint a different picture. So again, which would you rather? So some foundational planning documents of any city, these are kind of estimates of how often you should be updating them. Some cities do things differently. This really varies from community to community, but this is what's typical. So like capital improvement plan, every five years, that's in progress right now, we're working on that. But some cities do that every year. So there are outliers here, but these are kind of just what's typical. And the biggest thing I want to talk about on this slide, though, is that just because you approve an update to the plan doesn't mean you're not going to see it for a long time. Because some of these plans, you know, they, they come through every two to three years, some of them every five years, and it'll seem just like yesterday. But it's important that you recognize the development that you've had come in, changing community sentiment, even in a high-growth community or even a moderate-growth community, you have new people moving in. So if it's been five years, maybe your demographics have shifted. People move in, people move out. So some of these plans, especially like a Parks and Rec master plan that's currently underway, you've got to have updated for funding. So to be eligible for TPWD grants through the state, you have to have a Parks and Rec master plan that's updated every five years at max. So this is kind of a plan hierarchy. Some people get confused the difference between a strategic plan and a comp plan and their role in the city. The way I like to describe that is a strategic plan is for the organization. It's really about operations and administrative priorities and running the city, a lot of budget-related concerns and core values and how you want to operate as a council or as a city organization. And so with that, you know, you've got the financial plans and the action plan. But on the land side is where you get your comp plan. So a comp plan is really setting the stage for policies relating to land and development and redevelopment and even some additional fun things that we'll talk about here in a second. So your current comp plan was adopted in two thousand and eleven. It was updated in two thousand and sixteen. It's, it's kind of different in that it's combined with the capital improvements plan, and it mainly covers infrastructure-related topics, so water, sewer, storm, streets. And it's mainly intended for greenfield development, although there are some redevelopment things that go along with it. But a typical comp plan is going to have more elements than this. So this is kind of a combo. So we'll talk about some opportunities you have here. So with a comp plan update, you would kind of have an opportunity to synthesize all of the planning efforts and really organize everything together and say, okay, we've, we've been investing all these, in all these planning efforts and design efforts, but what is the larger land vision for Saginaw? What are we doing from a programming perspective? What are we doing from an aesthetic perspective? And then update new development, for new development, rather, changing conditions and demographics, really looking at what place types you want in the future. And we, we talked about destination venues and, and all those types of things. And then incorporate community feedback on key issues and focus on the changing context, incorporate walkability and landscaping and public art, evaluate key corridors. I know there's some corridors of interest in Saginaw that could really use some new visioning and a look at land uses and how you want those to function. And then to review some areas of the city to identify potential character districts. So what do we really want to preserve and what would we like to see evolve into something else? So these are the potential elements of a comprehensive plan that could be in the future for Saginaw, incorporating some of the previous fiscal and retail work that y'all have already had done, existing and future land use, really looking at those corridors, the National Guard property and the industrial core, and where is the heart of Saginaw? You know, where, let's talk about a downtown and, you know, if there's potential there. Just all sorts of things that we can really talk about on the land use and design side. Mobility and connectivity, not just roundabouts, right, but pedestrian safety and usability and efficiency. Parks and Rec, this is underway right now, but the way that would relate is that the comprehensive plan would have an overall vision and really talk about some of the high-level components of the Parks and Recreation Planning Process. And then utilities, services, and facilities, and implementation and monitoring. So these are kind of some of the items that we would go through. I'm not going to read each one of these to you, but really talking about competitive positioning and branding from an economic development side, health, safety, and services, arts and culture. You know, the farmer's market has all this demand and excitement, how can you capitalize on that? And how can you capitalize on things that are unique to Saginaw and really turn into some good return on investment? And then housing in neighborhoods. What type of housing would you like to see in the future in these redevelopment contexts? And again, what would you like to be preserved? So potential phases for a comp plan update, you know, you would start with some sort of survey to gauge strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats of the community, start to look at existing conditions, and then go into visioning, and then really start to focus on, okay, how do we achieve that vision? What actions are we going to take to make that vision a reality? And then implementation and beautification, which should, should never end. But how are we going to pay for this vision? And what can we do to just continue to enhance Saginaw? So community engagement for an effort like this. Obviously, there's the before times, before COVID, and there's COVID times, and hopefully an after. But we have projects that are one hundred percent digital right now, and we are seeing extensive engagement to the tune of thousands more participants than we would see in a traditional setting where we are just doing in-person and digital. So for some reason, we have a captive audience at home that really enjoy participating on these interactive websites. And then, you know, there's socially-distanced in-person engagement that we can do and also standard in-person engagement. So this is an example just of in-person engagement. We can even involve the kids. This kid right here wanted passenger rail in this city, and he was the only one to recommend it. And council actually took his recommendation, and passenger rail is actually being extended to that city now. So look at this visionary. But we can involve the kids in the planning process, too. So just going to open this up for any questions and discussion that you have of me. But new planning can generate excitement and unity around a common vision for Saginaw. It can be something fun that people can really rally behind and get involved with. You can communicate expectations with the development community. What is Saginaw open for? What do you want? Provide direction for rezoning requests, future plans, capital improvements and policies. Identify funding priorities and sources for major projects. So are there grant opportunities out there? Are there key partnerships? What opportunities do you have there? And then incorporate economic development strategies into your overall vision. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions, or we can chat about anything that you're interested in. So timeline for an effort like this, I would definitely recommend less than a year total. We really like to keep momentum going. Nine to twelve months is the typical, just depending on the breadth of scope that you want. Nine to 12 months is the typical, um, just depending on the breadth of scope that you want. If you had asked me that question in April or May, I probably would have had a different answer. But we have access to, um, data. You asked for numbers earlier. We have access to data that shows extensive amounts of engagement online. And I'm a, I'm, I'm a believer now, uh, so that it can be done, and it can be done in a meaningful way. We've had charrettes and stakeholder workshops and leadership retreats and all sorts of fun things online. But there's also really creative ways that we can do in-person socially-distanced engagement. People really are having fun with these planning and design efforts right now, and it's, it's a diversion from some of the things that maybe not, aren't as fun. So, um, if you, I mean, every three to five years, it, I mean, it's fine, too. You guys have had a lot of changing development context, and, um, I think the, the sooner that you start an update like this, the sooner you can benefit from it. And, um, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't wait just for a pandemic, but, um, if, I mean, I understand that component, obviously, but... Exactly. So we've written scopes like that. We've, we've scoped it at 100% digital and just put a thing in there, like, should, should social distancing restrictions, um, be lifted? We'll reevaluate community engagement and timeline, um, and kick, uh, kick back up the in-person. So we're staying super flexible. We've had cities that, uh, have their cases surge up, and they're like, ah, let's, let's wait a minute. And so we've, we've waited, uh, a month, and then when it dies back down, we, um, keep it going. So, super flexible.
One other thing to also consider is that we've got the Parks Master Plan going on at the same time. So just to build that or continue on that momentum and getting feedback from the city, trying to do that public outreach simultaneously for the Parks Master Plan and the comp plan would probably be ideal.
There's a lot of efficiencies, um, in that regard. So just thinking about the surveying component of just getting feedback. Parks and Rec is an element of a standard comp plan, so just tying that together, there, there's a, a ton of efficiencies there. Yes. So, um, first and foremost is Facebook. It is extensive reach. Not everybody has it. That's, we all know that. Not everybody has Facebook, but a lot of people do. So, um, Facebook is number one. The city maintains certain communications as well, um, that, um, you could put the effort in. Stakeholder interviews are very important to a comprehensive planning process. You talk to certain active people in the community, and you end the interview with, who else do I need to talk to? So kind of just keeping that, that phone tree going and figuring out who's engaged and who wants to talk about planning in Saginaw. We talked about the elderly community and outreach to them. We did a non-Zoomer phone chat in a, in a city, um, and, and that was super fun, and just had a call-in number, and we, we chatted about the city planning, downtown, we were planning there. So there's, there's ways we can actually strategically reach out to specific demographics in that way. You know, we find that, um, the elderly community can use Zoom, they don't want to. So it's not a capability issue. A, a lot of times, they, they have a young whippersnapper around that can fire it up for them or whatever, but, uh, they just don't want to. And so we, we adapt to that, um, and we don't assume that everybody's going to want to be on that. So there's a, we kind of try to hit a, a lot of different outreach methods and... Absolutely, yes.
And then one other suggestion we've gotten here multiple times, at least in terms of awareness, is putting a notification in the water bill, since everyone has to pay the water bill.
The utility bill stuffer is super effective. No, I don't want to. And that's okay. Yeah, and we've actually done what we call meeting in a box, uh, where we put together a little packet for, um, churches or nonprofits or, um, just community groups where they can real, we've put a PowerPoint in it before that they can kind of run through, um, with discussion questions, and they can take notes and give it back to us. There's a lot of fun things that we can do, um, on the engagement side to hit that group. Doable, yep. I will say on the consultant side, um, we have seen cities, uh, want to adjust those dates kind of with the pandemic set. So like I said, we remain flexible. We'll give you a timeline and we'll, we'll make sure to meet those on our side. But, um, if you guys want to tap the brakes a little bit or whatever at any time, then we'll be fine with that. Yep. Yeah. But it's very doable. Great, thank you. Yeah, likewise.
Mayor and Council, um, don't have too much new information for you other than, uh, picking up where we left off, um, on this item, um, last meeting. Kim provided a tax rate impact, which was, uh, an attachment to the packet. So, um, total impact of all the projects we potentially discussed is about 13 cents, I believe. Keep in mind that any or all projects, uh, that you would like to bring to voters, we would base them as is appropriate and, and we can handle sequentially. So, um, the tax rate impact wouldn't be coming all at once, nor would we issue, give voters approved, uh, a big amount of debt all at once. So, um, February is, if we're going to go to voters in May '21, uh, first meeting in February, you would have to decide the specific propositions, um, and move that forward. So, based on kind of some of the discussion from our last meeting, I think it appears there's a consensus for streets projects. The total is approximately 36 million. We would leave that broadly to be street improvements. That would be one, I, one, that would be, yes, three, two, street improvements. The rationale being we have a great opportunity with, uh, Tarrant County to get 50% match, should that be approved by voters in November of '21. If we have savings in one or multiple projects, we can push that to other, uh, parts of the city or other streets. Identify a blanket amount of about 4 million for, uh, general park improvements. So if you recall the previous item, we hopefully should have a shiny new park, um, in the near future, Miss White property, that's great. We have a number of, uh, improvements in our existing park system that, uh, we could put to work. Voters approve.
Would we work with the Park Board if our...
That's, yeah, that's a recommendation. So when the bond committee, um, Dolph, Dolph put that, the bond committee's recommendation was to have the, uh, Park Board prioritize whatever amount the council was comfortable with bringing to voters. So, you know, whether, couldn't tell you where that 4 million would be diced up, other than the recommendation was bring it to the Park Board and let them prioritize, which is a natural, um, good model to follow. I, I guess the biggest question is, uh, facility-wise, uh, what there's interest for. You are aware we purchased property for a future facility across the street. That's a library, um, senior center combination. Happy to discuss that further either now or at a future meeting, but, um, just following up with information requested and, um, early in, you know, like I mentioned, February is, is the deciding day to bring in that voters, so.
We'd have to lump it as one. Item one would be street properties, including all right door and all that new one. Maybe library, a rented-out term library would be another, would be a separate item. Third would be park and port, and we went in port of the engine. We're looking for, item, correct?
Would we not just make it all one facility? So you have parks, facilities, and streets?
So...
Why wouldn't we do that?
I believe, um, and I'll confirm with Lee, but I believe that, uh, facilities have to be by type. So if we were to do a library facility and a renovation next door, that could be one item. But a separate facility, you know, we had talked about doing a standalone senior center plus a library. I believe those would have to be two separate issues. What would firm that for our next meeting?
What would keep us from attaching the senior center to the library? The breeze way is similar to what we've done with our section, calling it one building.
I think that would be an issue as long as the bond council approved the language. Without the language, it was clear and, yeah.
I just want to be very careful about creating opportunities for somebody to think change.
Okay, just, well, I, I guess I thought we would want, uh, two separate center, center, two separate buildings. I thought the seniors really wanted their own.
I did, too, because I think we need it, because they're kind of pushed off.
Would they, would they, would the seniors feel, I don't know. If they were sharing property, they would have a shared place and not their own space or anything.
I think that if you share something with the senior citizens, their stuff gets haunted. There's no way you can stop somebody from wanting to...
Does it seem to not be better off to build more ownership, maybe one standalone building?
And also, they're talking about 4,000 square foot, which is way between this building and the library that costs $100,000, which is ridiculous. Again, I think that's unnecessary money to be spending.
And keep in mind, no, no facilities are designed, that what we're basing our decisions, uh, upon at this point for planning purposes is the facilities assessment. So what drives a facilities assessment are people in two phases. Number one, how many people are serving residents? And number two, the, the staffing and operational needs. So, um, specific features, uh, you know, repurposing would be addressed through design. And, you know, nothing says that with this one.
I, I, I just wanted to add on to what, uh, Gabe talked about. This, after our last meeting, taking the feedback we got from the council, uh, the next morning I asked the architects, BGA, L, to help us get a little bit more information. And what I had, I asked them specifically to do was to look at the property across the street we purchased, see if there's one enough room to do two separate facilities there. And if we do build a separate, uh, senior center, there are a couple of options. The press needs analysis, recommend 15,000 square feet, that's how much space we need. We could also go out of the city for that, that size, senior center needs to be 15,000 square, square feet. I'll also mention scaling it back to maybe 10,000, so give me a price for that as well. So he's going to take a look at that. We hoped to get that back last week, but we couldn't because of the Thanksgiving holidays. Should be something packed before y'all's next meeting. But, uh, just want my y'all to know, we have asked for that information, and, and I think it would be beneficial for y'all to see when we get that back from professionals. Well, the way I look at it, though, is we need 15,000 square feet of senior citizen program space. So what, what I, I mean, what I'm running through my head right now is we have, what, 4,000 square foot facility? We're servicing 23,000 people today. We have 35,000 to build up. The ultimate buildup is a 60% increase over what we have today. 60% over the existing 4,000 square foot facility is only 8,600 square feet.
Well, the problem is if we don't serve just Saginaw, anybody who comes in, so we can talk about, they want more than 2,000.
But what I'm saying is that if we're, we're building this for Saginaw citizens, paying for it with Saginaw tax rate money, then we need to be facilitating our, our senior citizens, a place for our senior citizens. Now, if we're building a 10,000 square foot facility here, that doesn't mean we can't build a 5,000 square foot facility somewhere else. That's 15,000 square feet of program space in the city for senior citizens. And I think if we create a 10,000 square foot facility today, that meets the needs for us for at least the next 10 years. And if there are opportunities that come up in the future for partnerships with developers, like what we're talking about at Belt Mill or some other opportunity where we can create an alternative location for seniors that causes them not to have to traverse the whole city to come to this location, there's a remote location for them. So I think it opens up a number of opportunities for us. I think it meets our needs at least for the next 10 years. And quite frankly, if we're using our 4,000 square foot model today as our standard, 23,000 people serve, I'm having a hard time getting 15,000 square feet anyway. So let's see, if 4 million is, so we need 10,000. 10,000.
What, what are folks saying, step in the back, is 67 million dollars a big number? If we broke out into a full package, what do y'all think about that? Think about the voters and that? Is that a good idea? Be successful if we promote properly on that.
The four, the seven, one, I'm talking about, you know, the pack, the package.
So, each of the, uh, street as a separate entity, or do you want them all together?
I would, I would group them all together, all the streets.
Yeah.
So four, one, two, three, yeah. Streets, library, renovation, parks, senior, 67. Very reasonable.
And maybe most of the roads might not be seniors, and they might say, oh, well, you know, they'll be there or maybe not, they have a... Um, there's certainly a spot out there, and I have an answer. But, you know, I don't want to do it in such a way that it takes a lot, it takes a lot, very, very, very project that would need and that are difficult to do.
Well, I still, I'll go back to the bridge, I know a lot of people are happy about that because it's so far behind schedule, it's got so much on its back. I'm afraid if you want to, you want to, uh, package, but, um, you know, a lot of the library, uh, the parking room, that's, um, if they're going to create, uh, seven, seven, eight. Seven, seven. I was, I just, I find it hard to convince people that 67 million dollars would be 20 million dollars at the end of the first. to convince people that six, seven million dollars would be twenty million dollars at the end of the first, I think, for us, people to say that's the one, uh, even thirty-seven million is difficult. And, and I'm very, I'm worried, there's just too many questions to get to.
Eric, what do you think?
I'm, four.
Four, I think. Four, I think sixty-seven million, pushing for that, I think, I'm sure it's a man.
I'll take that back. It is a big, my fault, my big thing is that we're handing. We got people out there losing their houses and can't pay rent, and now town is handling that care for, which is a good thing, but I think it might be a little bit late.
And we, we can't predict where we'll be.
We can't, we can't.
Hopefully we'll be better, I don't know.
We hope we can.
Well, I, I've served on a number of bond committees and part of my job is, is preparing, marketing, and selling small district bond programs in order for me to continue to have a job. So I, I look at it as the more you slice and dice up any bond election, the likelihood of it passing is significantly lower. Because what happens in a bond election is you try and touch every piece of the community with the whole. And if you allow pieces of the community to get into arguments with each other and, and destroy the elements one by one, it's the same thing as dividing a cover. So here we've gone way out of our way to bring in the community in a bond committee. They've made these recommendations, they've outlined all of us what their priorities are. We've all worked very hard together to determine how do we fit all of this into our hundred million bond, hundred million dollar bond, we all talked about last year. I know we've had the pandemic, I mean, that, that's a reality. But at the same time, look what's happening in our community, look what's happening with new housing starts, look, look what's happening in terms of people buying and selling homes. It really is not having an impact in the area that is the financial engine for a bond. And here we have a thousand units coming to the north end of Saginaw that will develop out over the next five to eight years. We've got somewhere around five hundred units in East Saginaw that will develop over the next four or five years. All of those developments will serve to diminish this thirteen cent tax impact. And I'm not sure, but are we accounting for those developments right now in these projections?
Now, because we don't know the timing of it, but we, the estimated growth to the taxable value is two percent, which is low.
Okay.
We're trying to be conservative.
Certainly. And what, what Candace pointed out here is our typical trajectory has been around two to four percent over time without aggressive growth. And, and we've had somewhat aggressive growth over the last five years, I think we would all agree with that. I think our growth rate has been closer to five to six percent if we were measured over the last three years, is that right?
It is, and this last year it slowed down.
Okay.
But if we have these big things that are in the works, we'll see, we'll see big bucks again. It's just hard to know when the timing is and when that'll happen.
And what, what I'm, what I'm getting at here is although this is a big price tag, the component of the tax rate is truly connected to what is our growth rate? And how fast are we gaining rooftops? And just the two projects that we have been deliberating over the last three months is an incredible increase for our rooftop count. It's an incredible increase to our valuation. So I think our two percent projections, which yield a thirteen cent impact, that's a very conservative look at it. I think that's what we need to be saying to our community. But if, if we think about what thirteen cents represents in terms of today's tax dollars, and we get all of these projects, we're able to get all these projects done. I think that's well worth it. I think the thirteen cents is well worth what we can get out of that. And the longer, remember, the longer we wait to make these decisions, it just gets more expensive. So I will be very careful about giving too much opportunity for one group to say, well, I want to build a library. I mean, we all know the library probably has the, the biggest boost up problem in the city, aside from the fire department, okay? So of course, the library's going to have a lot of, of, a lot of folks out in the community who's running up and voting. I don't know how many people are going to get out in the community running up street work projects. I'm sorry. Uh, because if you, if you live on one side of the city, people are going to vote for the East McRoy project, but they're sure not going to vote for the Nobles project. Because why do I want to spend money on a road out of the traffic? So we've got to look at this holistically, but we've got to touch every member of the community while we can. So my thought is, we keep it at sixty-seven, we try as hard as we can to, to sell this to the community, let them know we've done the best we can to touch every corner. And get it done is a group. My thoughts.
Girl. What do you say? Uh, we're looking, I want to point out, um, the street product is approximately thirty-six point three million average, Nobles and Raccoon. That's the max. We are assuming the town is in the last of the past, we'll need some money in town, we can't plan on that. But my, my guess is that will go down. How much? I don't know. So that is probably worth basis, thirty-six million, hopefully that will go down, with, with current trivia, with current trivia. Who knows how much the local people have, could be as much as half of eighteen million, but we don't, uh, but, but something different. Um, as far as, I could have one request, please. Ms. Stewart?
Well, I, I know, Kelly Stewart, four oh four Mustang Drive, I was more concerned that y'all were not going to make a separate senior center. And I went over to the rec center and looked at their two rooms, and it's just not feasible for a long-term solution. For short-term, it is. They're there five days a week. They can't make it their own because they have to pick everything up, and it's like leaving the hotel room, you know? That's the mentality of what's going on over there. They need a place that they can make their own. Have some stuff on the wall that they've done and leave up and know that people aren't going to ruin it. And, uh, but it sounds like it's.
It's a whole separate building.
Right, you know, and it sounds like y'all have already decided. So that was going, I had other things, but I think y'all have pretty much decided it's not going to stay over there at the rec center. That you're going to try and get them their own building, which they need, we need. I'm a senior. Thanks.
Well, just a pair, just a couple things. If, if any or all of these projects went to voters in, in May twenty-one and they did not pass, we could not, the city council could not issue certificates of obligation in three years. Uh, so that's something to keep in mind. The city council could go to the next general election date and bring any or all, uh, projects back to voters. So in this past election, uh, the city of Northridge and Hills brought a street package, I believe it was twenty-seven million to voters. I don't think there was significant tax rate impact, but it will pass close to eight twenty. Uh, so to the point of, for the, the good of the entire city, I think people recognize streets would have a global benefit as opposed to, you know, the most important street to me is Mountain Street. The other item, uh, Dolph mentioned, the fifteen thousand square feet for the senior center was based on the desires, uh, that staff shared during the facility assessment, uh, planning process. That was, uh, to have a larger kitchen, an activity room, and a few other things you might.
Yeah, the, the, the current facility, you're right, is, uh, we're having, that's all the space we're having, we're having service population, we have the four thousand square feet. We're not offering, offering all the programming we would like offered, there's not a thing that could do the things that, uh, the seniors have told the staff that they would like to do, for instance, fitness, there is not. The new programming has square footage built in for fitness, a much larger commercial kitchen, they have, their kitchen now is smaller than that home. So they need a place to prepare food, so those square footage is programmed in here as well. So that's how they got the fifteen thousand square feet is for open programming, open size of seat, and letting them read all of them.
All right, uh, did we discuss any other questions concerned?
Okay.
Good, thank you, go ahead.
I know, like, so in the previous meetings, we talked about, uh, ISP holding the bond, I heard it was they were holding the bond election next year. Do you ever check into that?
Yeah, confirmed that there's no plans for twenty twenty-one, uh.
I just didn't want to have to.
Good, understand.
I know the bonds are, I don't know.
I don't know what's next up, uh, what else we need, or we, or.
So like I mentioned, we have, uh, two meetings to, to, uh, discuss further, if you'd like. Action time is the first meeting in February, so if we have, uh, concurrence on any or all of these, happy to bring them back.
So for further, we do have to, all the details and everything lined up, all.
Correct.
Uh, like.
We can send these items as they stand now to bond council for the, the language, if you'd like to do that, or January meeting, happy to bring that back. If that's the will of the council at this point, I think that's probably a good plan, but, just very.
Um, are there any questions that weigh in on the, whether it's one that's come up and I'll give them one, I don't know, or those that are.
I, I wish I had an answer. I mean, I've been on the staff side of a few different bond elections, and I, I think the most important, uh, ingredient is education. So ultimately, we're all here to serve residents and we do what they tell us to do. So it's our job on the staff side to make sure they have information and the right information to make an informed decision. I think, you know, generally, there's sticker shock with lots of public projects. They're expensive, but it is what it is, so I wish I had an answer or a magic recipe. Rick's been pretty quiet this evening, maybe he does thirty-some years in Fort Worth, you know?
I just concur with your earlier observation that streets usually win bond, bond elections, so, uh, if you can get those projects to ride their coattails, then, then great, but.
And one thing, we need to put plenty of power into kids, so if we call this election, put our, what's actually the basis of this?
That's a good point. So, um, one thing, once we, once we have a decision on what projects are, will be on the ballot, um, we'll send out a mailer through all our bills so that everybody that has an account will receive that. I think the right approach is to engage the citizen bond committee. Y'all asked them to put in, um, blood and sweat, no tears, we were pretty easy. Uh, but put them to work. They were engaged and got a lot of information thrown at them and, and they know what they're talking about. So COVID has cranked everybody's style, but, you know, having some town hall type meetings or small type meetings, engaging the bond committee, I think is the right process. And again, ultimately, we'll do what, what focus that was.
I thought we shared, I have no, between now and May, we have town halls.
Yeah.
It's going to be, you know, it would be good, it'll be driven, it's very, very nice.
Sure. Yeah, I think the printed material we definitely can, can get and get out quickly. I think we can handle on a case-by-case basis, give questions from citizens or HOAs or, uh, what have you, and make sure people have accurate information to bring that home or to, so.
All right, count any other questions, Tom?
And, and we want to clarify this. There's two things that make bonds successful, education and advocacy. I mean, it's important that all of us are on the same page. If one of us off page, chances of this bond passing drops significantly. So we've all got to be on the same team for this bond. If we're all on the same team with this bond, and that, that is telling you, the likelihood of passing diminishes significantly. So it's education and advocacy. Stack cannot advocate at all about the law.
They just provide the money.
That's right. We can advocate, and anybody that's out in the community that is not a staff member can advocate, but they can also detract. So it's advocacy that's important here. We'll make sure this, like.
Yeah, so they have a long road to run, that's a great point. If you have, absolutely, if any customer has any concerns, we said with Gabe, uh, we can work through those and discuss it with the first lien or senior lien. If you have any concerns, questions on both planes, or giving alternate ideas, uh, let's give it out, here's Gabe, so many questions, yeah, we have. A unified plan, like that. All right, we beat this horse today. Anything else?
I'm.
Oh, yes, sir, that's right.
And, you know, once we do start advocating for it, that the neighborhood that you have at your own age, will be able to advocate. Yeah, with that, you're right. It's, it might be one way.
I'll just add, since he, he mentioned Fort Worth, I know Fort Worth, the Benny Bond programs that I was involved with. I mean, Fort Worth is kind of different, that they have homeowner associations, that they're very strong citywide. And so you had outreach to those groups, as you were talking earlier, you know, the, uh, the churches in Saginaw seem to be, kind of fill that role. So, I mean, that would be a, an opportunity to, to outreach, so at least it's like the Wednesday night services or, or whatever, where it's more of an informal sort of setting. And then, you know, what other, other community groups, uh, that we have, and we, we don't have as many as we need to have. But, uh, you know, those are important to, to get out in the community as a staff and, and leadership to advocate, as Councilmember Farr said.
All right, anyone else? I think under fourteen, second test, Mr. Plank, we'll be off the floor. I think he's the new major. Got our second one up there. At eight twenty-six. Thank y'all both.